I'd like to call this Kettering Board of Education Regular Session Meeting to order. It's December 13th, 2016, 5 o'clock in the Rees Idol Hall at Fairmont High School. Item one, Mr. Shaw, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bayless?
President.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Here.
Here.
Item two, may I have an adoption?
I move we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Shaw, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims Parks?
Yes. Item three, may I have a motion?
I have a motion and we adjourn to executive session to discuss the employment of a public official.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims Parks?
Yes. We will be going to executive session and we'll be back to conduct business. We have a motion and a second. Mr. Shaw, will you please call the roll?
Actually, you can declare out of exec.
Okay, we're out of executive session.
Thank you.
Item four, will you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item five.
I move that we adopt the minutes of the November 1st, 2016 Regular Meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Shaw, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims Parks?
Yes. Item six, recognition and reports.
I would like to take a note of the passing of Mr. Paul Shardle. Paul Shardle was at the, opened, helped open Van Buren Junior High School in 1949. I was there, I played in his band that year. He was, he along with Clark Haynes and Bob Dykerson really laid the groundwork for the wonderful music program that is now Kettering schools are known for. He also spent several, many years, I think 14 if I remember right, as principal of Beaver Town Elementary School. He was one of the foundation members of this great school district we've got here and I just wanted to make note of that.
Thank you, George. Item A, STEM experience, Mr. Klein, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. I know the roads seem treacherous, but they're really not. All day the main roads are just fine, just go a little bit slower when you turn into your cul-de-sac. So tonight what we wanted to do, I've presented a couple of times to the board and to various other groups about the STEAM initiative within the elementary schools and within our middle school and high school here in Kettering. And earlier on this year, a group of elementary school teachers and I ended up attending a STEM workshop as the Dayton STEM Regional Conference. And we met and we talked and we said, you know, one of the things that we haven't done for the board is have them experience this hands-on. It's a lot different and we tell this to our kids. It's one thing to read something in a book and it's another thing to learn about it hands-on or to experience something in the environment. So we wanted to take this time and do a brief STEM lesson, STEAM lesson with you and hopefully give you a little bit more background about why we are continuing to move in this direction with our students and our classrooms. So, so four of the big pieces that is taught through the STEM or STEAM initiative or lessons are the four Cs. Now if you look up there, you'll say there's three Cs and a P. But that P, that problem solving, is really, really critical thinking. Communication, so many of our students here in the past have not been taught how to hold a conversation or to disagree respectfully. Actually, if you look at our Congress, nobody has been taught that lesson. So our hope is by intervening early with students, not only are we preparing students for success in middle school and high school, but also in the future careers that they may explore. Collaborations where we teach students how to value the opinion and the positive points of view that others may bring within a problem-solving scenario and then what it means to come to a consensus. And when we come to a consensus, that doesn't mean that we all full-heartedly agree on something, but we've hashed out the details and we are okay with the decision being made and we're not going to undermine the process because we didn't get our way. So all four of those pieces are extremely important. The Three Little Pigs, this is a STEAM lesson that was actually taught by one of our own, Bern Sweeterman down at Southdale. And if you look closely here, they were all given the same charge to create a home for one of the Three Little Pigs that would stand up to a wind test. Is that correct? All right. But what you'll also notice is none of these homes look exactly the same. And to value different lines of thinking is extremely important. And to be able to evaluate the successes of each of these projects ultimately will bring the students to a better understanding what does make up the best structure to withstand the wind test. So tonight, what we want to do is we want to have you participate in the hanging fruit activity. And I'm going to let Bern introduce this. We act, I like how you split up. Jay wasn't going to participate, but we can't leave.
Okay, so we're going to ask for Amy and for the school board to go back to your seat. And then you guys are going to participate. You've got anything on flat surface. Okay, so the Three Little Pig Experiment or the Three Little Pig Engineering Design Process STEAM Challenge was done by second graders. And the wind challenge was actually my lead boy. And some of those, some of the structures, oh, I'm sorry. Some of the structures that they made actually held up, we counted for 10 seconds and they actually held up for 10 seconds without blowing over and being knocked over. Okay, so here is your, here's what you're going to be doing. You guys, this activity I did with my third grade students and what we do, those are just extras, the extra stuff. So what we're going to, what your challenge is, is that you guys are going to go ahead and you're going to make a STEM, okay? Because in third grade, part of the standards is for them to understand the parts of the plants and their jobs and what they do. And so we talked about how the STEM transports water and nutrients and food into the different parts of the plants, but also a big part of the STEM's job is to support the fruits and the leaves and stuff of the plant. And the higher it goes, you know, some of the plants, they want to go up really high because they get the sun, so the leaves can reach the, you know, the most, get the most sort of photosynthesis. Now, so here's the challenge. They went, had to go through the engineering design process. I'm not going to have you guys go through the entire engineering design process because that takes time. You're welcome. But, yeah. So now, and if you notice, we are reusing in Kettering, these Chrome boxes make a great thing for us to reuse things with. So now, isn't that great? Yeah. So basically what you're going to be doing is, your challenge is this, you're going to take your fruit and your fruit that we have for you today is a caramel apple. So just pretend it is an apple. Some of these are a little smushed. But you are only using, only using the materials that are in your box. You can't use the box. You must have a freestanding stem and you're going to try to get the fruit as high up as you possibly can, freestanding. We are going to then measure, at the end of the competition, we are going to, at the end of the challenge, I shouldn't call it competition, we are going to measure how far your fruit, not the how high your stem is, but how far your fruit is from your table or from you guys, the floor, to the fruit, the top of the fruit. Okay? Yes. And so you can only use those things and it must be a freestanding structure. So what that means, you can't tape it to the table, okay? You can't do that, it has to be freestanding. I should be, I should be able to pick yours up and move it over, okay? Does that make sense? Any, I know it is. Isn't that terrible that I should put those restraints on you? You're exactly right. Has a root system. And then that's what's really cool, the kids will say the same thing.
Do I have to use everything?
No.
Inside the box?
No. You pick and you choose, pick and choose. So, begin.
And kind of do like, do we have to test or not? Because it could be that high.
Or we could just do three of them?
And then we start adding our stuff.
And then we only get so much tape.
Can I just cut or rip it apart? They didn't shake it.
Or you could tie it when we tape it.
So like we tape this right here?
Yeah. Tape it around that little thing.
I have to take my microphone off.
Right here. So we've got our tape.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Come on, six rounds.
Which, which way?
Tape might be.
Right. Give me a little tape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how much.
Just a little bit of it.
Or just use a little tape.
Our thing.
I don't know.
Thank you.
Oh, that's what everybody says. That's what losers say. Or whatever that saying is.
I could probably do this if I was in grade, but I can't help it.
Are we doing it?
Are you happy with it? See, so what we're going to do, George, is get this like.
Well, you know the answer kind of.
So Bern, you want to talk to him about the components of kids and the constraints and why that's important for kids?
Wrong.
I didn't do it right. So the, the different things that you guys are looking at as you guys are building, a big part about having the strangest, is that kids will just come out and, you know, like you let them have any materials anywhere, you know, like they can really do.
Right.
See, other thing is, but the teachers.
I was giving my son one credit there.
When you're going into engineering field, you know, you have sometimes you're limited to a certain amount of supply. Somehow we've got to get it. That you can. Think about the, that moody. Think about what.
How many steps to win? Two?
I just wonder if three of them would be better than all of them.
Face practice.
Oh, right, Apollo 13.
Yeah, Apollo 13. They only had certain materials that they could engineer and build something. So the engineering design process.
Just cut like a piece of cardboard.
Is, you have a channel. You then brainstorm. You then design, develop and design before you even start building. But we're skipping those parts.
Oh, but we're not. Yeah, I'll do it.
And then you build. Then you test. Then you evaluate. Then you redesign.
All we're trying to do is make this next thing. We haven't gotten to those problem case parts.
Remember, my third graders did this and they really, I won't tell you how high they got it, but.
When we found this and did two things.
Okay, notice how highly engaged you are. That's what the students, the students become highly engaged. You go into a STEAM classroom and they are highly engaged. Notice how you have to communicate, cooperate, collaborate, reach consensus. Notice the teamwork. Notice the critical thinking. You cannot, I forgot to say this, you cannot rip your apple apart. You cannot, you know, whatever, it's got to stay whole. You're not allowed to tape it to the floor, it must be freestanding. Okay, I'm just making. Okay.
Do you measure this real fast? Because Mrs. Sims, it's not a race.
Don't give me that look, it's a good as a catch.
This is as good as a catch.
Okay. It's all about that base, about that base, no trouble. It's all about that base, about that base. It's all about that base, about that base. It's all about that base.
It was standing.
Who is? Another tape. There are measurements that are done. No, freestanding. I'm noticing a lot of different designs. There are a lot of different designs. Some are satisfied with just having a, a tower and support.
So, is this on? Is this on? All right, good. So one of the things, and as you keep working, we would actually stop the kids and we'd ask them, we'd have them actually reflect upon their design and then they would actually take a look at maybe other people's designs to see if, you know, did another team come up with a solution to this problem? So just looking at yours right now, where are you having problems? Is it at the top? I heard one team saying, we're having problems at the top. Them? Having problems with the whole thing. Is anybody having issues with it standing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So that would lend us to think that there may be an issue at the what?
Base.
Base. So typically we don't go this fast as students and we let them discuss a little bit more. But successful designs usually have a very solid base.
All right, please try. I know, I'm sorry.
I abandoned my partner.
This is not cheating. This group, their tape got messed up.
Uh huh. Their teacher favorites. Favoritism, that's exactly right. Oh, that's a great idea. I see, this is not happening.
Do you want to add in something that maybe you, you think's important?
Does this have a button? Are you just talking to it? We might lose Jim. But they're done. I don't know.
Do you want to give up?
No. No. We're not, we're not giving up.
Yes. So that's actually, that's probably a good point.
So I feel, I feel sorry for those of you who are not finished, but Bern actually asked a great question. And I know that some of us do want to get home tonight, so I'm not going to let you continue.
Oh, no, we're in, we're in now, sorry.
There is no continuing the meeting.
Everybody's hostage now.
Did you hear what they just did? They went, oh.
But this is what our kids are experiencing in the classroom. And what they're learning is, one, they're learning teamwork, they're learning critical thinking skills.
Yeah.
But personally, for me, one of the things that they're learning is reflection. And so often we pay very little attention to personal reflection and how to make ourselves better. In education, if we could have our students stop and think, what is it that I could do better next time? How could I grow myself next time? Then we've accomplished a lot. So if you want to go through the next slide, Scott.
Will it stand on a table?
We go to the next slide.
We know our error, it doesn't count.
So we just talked about the critical thinking piece. Next one, next one. Now, we talked about this, we would actually have kids measure the strength and height. And the art component for STEAM in Kettering, we have an amazing arts program. And in the real world, it's not just about how tall your building is, it's how visually pleasing your building can be as well.
Form follows function.
So that aesthetic piece is extremely important for some of our students, actually all of our students.
To pay attention to.
Next slide.
Sorry.
I talked about this, it's constant reflection, comparing results, justifying your thinking and communicating with peers and colleagues. Next. So why STEAM? Go to the next slide. It's a 21st century learning skill. I mean, there are so many of these skills embedded within the STEAM process. It, it's all encompassing. We're teaching our kids the collaboration, how to justify their thinking. We're teaching them how to utilize, leverage technology to make points, to research information and to share their information with varying audiences, not only in their classroom, not only in their school or their city, but across the country and the world, depending on what they're using. Next.
The writing, the little point for me, I teach third grade, you wouldn't believe that I'm saying this to them, but we talk about quantitative and qualitative data. When you have to do an imported write or tech write, their weakest part, the hardest part for them is to embed data and to put in analytical thinking. Because when you hear a third grader go, well, I'm going to talk about this quantitative and I'm like, oh my gosh, it's so good. Because they're realizing that this is real life, it's real world, it's all connected. So to me, it's the writing component as well.
That's good. Well, because then that goes to their test, testing in high school, you know.
Exactly, and that's so hard to purchase.
Yep. Well, throughout, but yeah.
Next slide. So these are actually some Southdale students taking part in the Hanging Fruit Challenge. I was fortunate enough to teach Bern's class one day when he was pulled out and it was, it was awesome. It was a great time. So I was able to take some pictures of students going through this next slide. And it was, it was great because you saw the kids who really had that communication skill down and those who were still learning and discovering how best to communicate with their peers. Next slide.
Hi, new voice. Jay Boyce, Southdale Elementary Principal. So I wanted to talk a little bit about, obviously Bern is a STEAM specialist this year at Southdale and it's a little different kind of position and way of thinking. So I just kind of wanted to talk about what we're doing at Southdale and how that fits this mold. Actually, I was watching last night about the Apollo mission and the different missions and how they, they had the original Mercury mission and they showed the rockets blowing up over and over and again and the astronauts are like, we're going to get on that. But, you know, JFK, he, he announced, hey, you're going to do this and they're all like, we're going to do that? They, at that point in time, they didn't have a plan, they didn't, but they made it happen. And part of what we want to do is the same idea. We want to put it out there for our kids and they'll, they'll achieve it if we put it out there. They also have to want it and that's a big part of this is the motivation. So when we looked at Southdale, you know, we kind of talk about STEM and you've heard about it for a long time. It's been mentioned as a principal, oh yeah, that sounds really good, but it always kind of goes next on the list because it's a big idea. So that was a problem we saw. We also had a lot of isolated events going on. We had a beautiful garden, we have a farm-to-table program we do, but it's not connected together very well for the students and/or the teachers to the curriculum. Could you switch slides? So we wanted to look at how we could make this flow and fit at Southdale and how could it work? So we looked at big ideas, we wanted to get hands-on engaging experiences for students. We wanted team teaching and planning, so we didn't just want it to be, could you go back? Thank you. We didn't want it to just be a special that kids walk to and experience an hour and then they were done with. We want it to be part of our culture. So I'll kind of explain how that happened and also to make sure we had good STEAM units developed based on standards, but also integrating several subjects. This summer I was reading a book about a professor, I think he's Michigan State, and he started playing video games. He's like 52 years old and he said, I started playing video games this summer and I, he said, I got out the manual. I wanted to know how to play, so I pulled out the manual and it was, you know, it was this thick and he said, I started reading it and it didn't make any sense. I think it was Minecraft or something. He's like, it didn't make any sense. So I got out the console and I said, I'm just going to try it. So for a week straight, he said, I played the game and I played it horribly, but I played it. And after a week, I pulled the manual back out and it made way, way more sense. Because he had experiences to base what he was reading on. And that's the same thing we're trying to do when we look at providing those experiences. Our kids don't walk in with every experience and they can't relate what they're reading to something that they've actually felt or experienced in life. So that's something we're trying to do. So the plan, we've kind of hit last year, Bern actually took some of his planning time and worked with second grade and they provided throughout the year, every other week, a STEAM experience, worked with the second grade teachers and they really enjoyed that. The student, I remember him telling me that students came up to him and he saw him an hour every other week. But I think, I don't remember where he was and a student came up, hey, Mr., this is Mr. Sweeterman, he's our STEAM teacher, you know, they're just really engaged by it. We did a family STEAM night where we had people, parents come in with their, their kids and we were able to do several of the green screen activity where they were on a roller coaster and got a lot of emails about that from parents, just really enjoying it. And that helped bring the information to them. And then finally, we really worked on growing infrastructure and making sure we were ready to have a broader program. We have like a weather bug down at Southdale for the weather. We have, we really expanded our gardens, have a greenhouse. So this year is our whole school pilot. And I, just to give a little background, you know, Bern is a full-time STEAM specialist now. He works with K through 5. Every week he sees second through fifth graders in his classroom for an hour. And it's a special, but the key is that the classroom teacher comes along and is co-teaching that with him. And then they also spend time planning throughout the week to prepare for that. So you'll kind of see, can you go to the next slide? The, one of the big things here is not just that it is for the kids to learn this, but we really want to build the capacity of our staff to bring these experiences to the students, not just for an hour, but throughout the day. We really are providing onsite, real-time professional development to teachers. We don't have to, well, we don't have to pay for it beyond the position of STEAM specialist, but we don't have to pay for outside, they don't have to leave the classroom, they're, we don't have to get subs for them. I mean, it's a huge benefit and you would love to hear the conversations teachers are having, not just about STEAM, but about the standards and how we can actually, oh, I could hit the standards that way. Oh, I can do reading and science the same time and hit it with this lesson. So it's really built in what our teachers can bring to students. And so STEAM literacy becomes a part of our culture at Southdale. And I think over time, we would be able, every teacher would be comfortable saying, yeah, I'm a STEAM teacher. The next part is allowing us to make connections to the classrooms. So having the teacher there allows us to not only, you know, Bern is really building what he does during that time off of what they're doing all week in the classroom as well, so it makes a lot of sense to kids. And we really are looking to, is this something that could expand into the district? And that's a question that we go from here on, because we're really working at, at Southdale. The kids love it, the teachers are really buying in, but the question is, how can that expand? And we're really looking at the whole process with the growth mindset. So right now, is it perfect? No, we're learning from what we do, we're learning from how kids react, we're learning from how they grow and then we're building on that. And then the last slide, you can come see us in action. You're more than welcome to visit Southdale any, any time. You're more than welcome to visit Southdale any, anytime, Tuesday through Friday, 8:30, 11:30, or 12:15 to 1:15 are the times students are in that class. A lot of the other times, there's planning going on or maybe smaller group stuff. So more than welcome to stop by and see it in action.
Thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you.
I, I just wanna quickly say thank you. I know that Jay mentioned Byrne, but we have many teachers from the district that have been teaching STEAM-related lessons in the classroom. I wanna thank Teresa Ewing from PRAS coming out tonight to help lead one of these sessions. I'd like to thank Tracy Karmauega from O'Neal.
Don't put her name to it.
And of course Byrne and Jay from South. Thank you all very much for participating, and you'll be hearing from Mr. Shaw.
Great, thank you so much, Mr. Hunt. No, there are no winners.
You want cannolis for the highest hanging fruit?
Yeah.
Looked like the group that was right there.
Right, yes.
Yeah, they had a smart idea.
Those are our encatering Leadership Academy members, right there.
If you breathed on, if you looked at it wrong, it would fall.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other recognition and reports?
I just, if I could, real quick, I just wanted to say, I know all of you were in attendance, Mr. Shaw, last night's music program was just exceptional. I know all of you have been attending various programs throughout the district, but it just accentuates the excellence, and the support that you and the board, you as a board have given those groups, they really culminate in a fantastic performance, and just wanna thank all of you for being there last night. Great job, they did a good job last night.
They did a great job. I think that that is becoming a very popular community event. And it was really fantastic.
Very well attended.
Very talented people, so...
Lots of talented students.
Right, right. Thank you. Anything else? Item seven, board committee reports. Anyone have anything?
Well, there've just been a lot of, I think I'm connected here, there've been a lot of Christmas programs that we are attending and will be attending through next week, and they've been, aside from the music program last night, they've all been very, very good. And a lot of, a lot of parents and grandparents, so there's been really good attendance at them as well.
Thank you, Julie. Item eight, we have no request from the public regarding agenda items. Item nine, information for decision makings, for decision making. Our upcoming meetings are, will be next year, January 10th at 6:00 PM here in the recital hall, and at that time, we will plan for this calendar for the next year. Item 10, decisions of the board, Julie?
I have a recommendation to authorize the commencement of bidding, including the advertising and the review of bids for Fairmont High School track improvements, and I move for approval.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Mr. Lackey, would you like to come up? Thank you for already being on your way.
This is one of the projects that's on our schedule to be completed for next summer out of our PI fund. The design is, is prepared, so we asked the board's permission to go out to bid for that project, and then we will have multiple projects in January that we were asking, be asking the board for permission to go out to bid on for summer projects as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Does this include the bleachers?
The bleacher package has already been awarded.
Okay.
And that product, they actually are starting with some of that now, of removing the old bleachers, and they'll be working on that through the winter as the weather allows.
Thank you, Ken.
Any other comments or questions? I'm gonna ask you to call the roll, so you might wanna stand up.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims-Parks?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Item 11, we have a motion.
I move we approve the Human Resource Services Agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Inskeep, do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am, I just recommend we approve the Human Resource Services Agenda as written, please.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Shaw, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims-Parks?
Yes. Item 12.
I move that we approve the Business Services Agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Inskeep, do you have any comments?
Yes, ma'am, I just recommend we approve the Business Services Agenda as written.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Shaw, will you please call the board for the role, please, sir?
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims-Parks?
Yes. Item 13.
I move that we approve the Office of the Treasurer's Agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Shaw, do you have anything to say?
Just a couple notes. One, we have both November and October financials in there for you to review, just given the timing of the November meetings, we did them together. The second is, shortly after the holiday, we'll be doing an update on where we are with plan for this year. You'll notice that's not in the packet this time, but we are working on that, and we'll be able to show you how we're progressing with our financial plan for this fiscal year.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions? Will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims-Parks?
Yes. Item 14.
I move that we approve the Instructional Services Agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Mr. Inskeep?
Recommend we approve the Instructional Services Agenda as written, please.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from anyone on the board? Mr. Shaw, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims-Parks?
Yes. We have no request from the public regard, regarding a hearing, and Mr. Bayless?
I move we go into executive session for personnel matter.
Second.
A motion in a second. Mr. Shaw, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bayless?
Yes.
Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Ambrose?
Yes.
Mrs. Sims-Parks?
Yes. We will not be coming back to conduct new business. Thank you.